Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular meeting scheduled for July 12, 2021. At this time, I'd like to ask that we call the meeting to order. We'll start by with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've all been presented with your packets, had a chance to review the items in your packets. At this time, I am looking for a motion to approve the tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Secretary Brogman, seconded Mr. Sullivan. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, I will ask for a vote, all those in favor. Anybody opposed? Very good. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items on the, the items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. This time, I would ask for a motion to consider the consent agenda before so we'll have you review them, if you would, Mr. Krugel.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of city council. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we have the city council minutes from the June 28th meeting. There were a couple revisions to that that has been sent out to city council. We have dispersment approvals through July 12, 2020, 2021, totaling just over $1.7 million. Things to note, and these are also included in the, on the consent agenda is a pay request number two to Landmark Structures. That's for the Water Tower project. Pay request number two to Pember Company is, that's for the South, or the Main Street project that we have. And then we have a debt service payment, and then our MMPA purchase power for just under $700,000 for this month. We have personnel actions where we're hiring a part-time police officer. And then we have the approval of a CASA, so County State Aid Highway Maintenance Agreement with La Sure County Highway Department. That's something we renew every year. They provide some funds for us to do some of the maintenance and snow removal on, on the CASA highways that we have in town. Again, we have those pay applications to Pember and Landmark, and then we have the electric load shedding policy, which is somewhat timely with some of the hot weather that we've had this summer and that we may be expecting this summer. And really what that does is it identifies our top users in town. And then MMPA, our purchase power provider, has a policy where they have a list of, of the member communities. And if there is such a time where we have to reduce the amount of load that we have on the system, they will ask us to implement this load shedding policy. I believe we are the first member community to actually formally adopt this. So this is something that Rich has worked with MMPA representatives to really kind of fine tune, to make sure that it meets what their desired outcome is for this, this policy. So we're, we're ready if there is anything that, that needs to happen. I believe we are number six on the list, six out of 12. So there will be five other member communities that would be asked to, to reduce their load, and that's based on the, the total amount of, of electricity each one of those communities use. So they've never had to implement this. That's not saying that, that we won't have to in the future, but we are, we're ready if this policy does get adopted. And that, that wraps up the consent agenda for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Krugel. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Krugel?
I have one quick question, Jasper, just for clarification. With the load shedding, do all five of those entities shed load at the same time? Or do we go down the list?
Good question. We would ask them all. We're gonna, the, the goal is to reduce our load by 10%. So we would ask all of those entities to reduce what they're using by about 10%, and that should get us to where we want to be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain any motions.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lozey, I caught first. So it's been, any other discussion, concerns, questions? If not, we'll entertain a vote, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? We're going on to public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting, of the meeting on the sheet and provide and identify themselves and by providing their name and their address. Mr. Krugel, do we have anybody that has signed up to address the council?
Yes, Mayor Kirby, we have David Schiber here to, to address the council during the public comment. So we invite Mr. Schiber to come up and, and address the council.
Good day, Mr. Schiber, how are you?
Good day, Mr. Kirby, or should they say, good evening. It's always a pleasure. First off, I'd like to welcome Ms. Mahoney, Mr. Lozey, to the council. I came here tonight to, I don't know, offer a suggestion, become more informed. At a previous meeting online, I was going to bring this up, but there was other matters that needed to be addressed, and I wasn't going to wait around online to see when I was going to be available to talk. Anyway, some time went by, I spoke with a council member. They told me that I should speak with the charter commissioners. So I went to a charter commission. I spoke of my idea. They did not seem too enthused. And I kind of felt I wasn't treated very nicely by a couple of the people. So I'm here tonight, Mr. Kirby, council members, to speak of this. At that, what the, the matter is, is I feel I have learned online from watching, reading articles and so forth, papers, TV. Many cities are adapting boards. I reuse the word justice reform because I've seen that mentioned many times. Many of the issues are directed at police departments. I do not wish to solely pick on the La Sure Police Department. And I feel since La Sure is the quality town that it is, if the board was established, it could be bumped up to be just a general complaints board. Whether it be a complaint about some city staff, not to insult you folks, you, Mr. Kirby, or one of these council members, that could be reported to that board. So I feel there should be a voluntary complaints board established within the city of La Sure. I spoke with the charter commission. I have seen that some cities have elected to abolish the charter commission and revamp it and make it a civil rights board. This is something I really feel is needed. Some might feel that will, not to pick on the police department again, that the police have body cameras. The problem with a body camera, it records, it photographs, but it does not photograph the actions of an officer, unless there's another officer there that captures the officer's demeanor, so to speak, or a citizen that happens to video something. I feel such a board was established, you know, it could solve a lot of communication issues that I feel take place within the city as far as complaints. And I guess that pretty much sums it up, but I feel that you should seriously consider a board like this. This is essential for La Sure, and La Sure is a great community. It needs citizen involvement. And some might say, La Sure is a small town, we don't need things like that. Well, I revert to, look what happened in Olivia. Olivia is smaller than La Sure. There are many things I would like to discuss with you folks, but I do not have the time to address it. But there are very many things I see every day in La Sure that need to be addressed, some of them as soon as possible. Some of them could even, somebody could get hurt because of it or even killed. As I shared with Ms. Mahoney, I've lived in La Sure my whole life. On the south end of town, I know of two accidents, serious accidents that happened in a dip down there. I've seen many people, I've spoken with safety issues on the south end of Canada town, and I definitely feel their opinion is right because I experience them every day. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Schiber, thank you, and thank you for the kind words of this beautiful community of La Sure. We, we know you're a lifetime resident, and we appreciate your input. Thank you. Anybody else tonight?
No, sir.
Very good. With that, we will move on to the regular agenda. This time, we will discuss the County State Aid Highway 36, South Main and Ferry Street improvements project, order plans, and specifications. Mr. Beanthing, I will have Mr. Krugel introduce you.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of city council. We have City Engineer Beanthing here today to guide us along the process of, of the Chapter 429 process with the, with the project on South Main. He'll go over the, the calendar of events and sequence of events, and today is just one of those days that, that follows the, the public hearing, so I'll hand it off to Cory.
All right, thank you, Mr. Krugel. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Council. So we're here to talk about CASA 36. Should be pretty familiar at this point in time, but the improvement areas is CASA 36, South Main Street, so from those South City limits up to Ferry Street, and then the remainder of 36, then from Ferry to, or first on Ferry from South Main to Fourth. Then we have a little bit that we're, we're adding in that is be a city, city participating piece would be Ferry Street and then the West Parking Lot. So if you don't mind, Jasper, thank you. So last meeting, we had the public improvement hearing where we were able to, to hear comment from the public and, and council would be able to, to consider those comments and prior to making the official ordering of the project. The acceptance of the project area is really what Chapter 429 wants to, wants to hone in on this step of the process, get buy-in from the public and buy-in from the community. This is the project area, really identifying what of that project area is going to be assessed and then officially ordering that. And then that officially then initiates the preparation of the final plans. This is really the last action as a council, as a governing body, until those plans are brought forward to be approved and then ultimately go for bidding. So this is really to kickstart what would be, you know, in this project, about a six to seven month process here to final design CASA 36. And that's really what, what we'd be asking for tonight, a resolution to officially order the project. One of the pieces of feedback that we heard quite a bit of concern about and just, you know, observation was, was the speed of 36. So talking with, with city staff, we feel that there would be a value to the project to proceed with the speed study. We did one on 22, we would do one here, proposed to do that a pre, pre-construction, an existing condition speed study. I think it would help, you know, validate and, and, you know, really provide a, a true data point of what is the speed experienced on 36. And then I think that data will be helpful both for a public, you know, understanding as well as us at a staff level as a city, you know, what strategies are best implemented and, and, you know, really how can we, if there is a documented speed concern, how can we adequately address that with the design? We'd anticipate to, to handle that, he had to say, within the next couple of months. And then the rest of the schedule is a repeat from the last meeting. We'd have another neighborhood meeting. Really, this, the goal of that speed study bill had that data to, to share at the neighborhood meeting. So those dates are kind of strategic in that way. And then we would be looking at early 22, bringing those final plans forward for, for authorization and then ultimately moving forward in construction next year, 2022. And then a recap of what we talked about, but then the next official hearing is the assessment hearing that'd be, you know, late summer, almost a, a year from now, about 14 months from now, to, you know, fall in line with how the city's been handling assessments, really being that post-construction or near end of construction. A recap, we talked about having the assessments this summer, so we will have those numbers in, in mind and we'll be able to communicate those, but we wouldn't formally adopt that process until, you know, late summer next year. Don't mind Jasper.
Cory, can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead, yes.
In regards to speed study, can you just clarify that, so that's an internal speed study?
It is, yep.
If we were to look at speed changes, that would have to go through MIND, correct?
It would, yep, that's very correct. Being a county state aid highway would go through MIND, and, and in order to truly look at that, and we're not looking at so much of as a change of posted speed, you know, for all, for all understandings, I think we all, we've talked about CASAS, county state roads, 30 is probably the best we're going to get, but really just getting, getting a feel for if that, that median speed is truly greater than 30 and then just really, I think, validating some of the design, design considerations that we would, we would propose to implement here. So internal, just for our sake and understanding. So then a few other things, you know, one of the, one of the, the strategies with the improvement hearing being a meeting before we actually move forward with the resolution and the ordering is to be able to, to, you know, receive those comments and weigh in and provide some consideration that we've heard, that we heard them. And so a few things that, you know, I took, or we as a council, I think, took away from the improvement hearing was there was a lot of discussion about sidewalk. I think at staff, as an engineer, on the engineering side, we're acknowledging that we're still in review of this. So we're currently looking at, you know, both sides. I think we heard some feedback that there was maybe, you know, some desire to have sidewalk consistently both sides, so we're actively looking at that. We heard and, and we're reviewing that. And we would recommend, you know, report back to council through that final design, what we end up resolving or what we end up concluding there. You know, the speed, talking about that a little bit further, you know, really what we had hoped to gather from the speed study is, is, you know, assessment and application of some managing speed strategies that we've already implemented as a city. You know, the dynamic speed sign, I think we've talked about having those on all of our CASAS as we enter towns. I think we'd be very much looking at incorporating one of those here on 36. Elmwood, we striped at 11-foot lanes. I think you feel that as you drive that, that, that one foot is, is noticeable. You know, strategy about bump outs, we did implement that at Fifth Street. You know, there's maybe some thought, does, does one apply here on South Main? Maybe Rise Door for, I think, you know, from an engineering standpoint, there's a lot of support that bump outs help with that speed. So just some strategies that we'd be looking to implement in that final design. You know, other, other things that are noted, you know, we heard some feedback here that we, we've got a pretty unique encroachment on South Main. So I think as a city staff and as a city, we're, we're acknowledging partnership with the county to, to move forward if resolution is possible there on that garage structure. And then we, we had some discussion and, and council's been, you know, made aware that there's some uniqueness with, with septics and wells, and we passed a city policy to help support, you know, getting those on sewer and water services. At a minimum, we're planning to, to stub out new sewer and water, but really taking that next step and getting those folks to hook up and abandon those septics and city limits and abandon those wells. So just a commitment here to be ongoing and, and really looking to, you know, have that included in the project and, and really solve that to, to the point of being able to competitively bid and, you know, move forward with those improvements. So just wanted to capture here that we know there's work to do, and this is really that official step to, to start that process. And so then the last piece, as we talked about, is, is that, that, that approval of that formal resolution, ordering the project and preparing plans, just really consistent, almost to a T of that statutory requirement from Chapter 429. Now with that, I'd be happy to have, answer any questions or have any other discussion.
Any other questions from the council at all? If not, we can entertain a motion, Resolution R 2021-033, ordering the improvement and preparation of plans for the CASA 36 improvement project.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lozey.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mahoney, thank you. This time, I'll ask for any discussion, concerns, comments? If not, we will take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Very good. Moving on to item 6B on the agenda, regular item 6B, electric rate study. Mr. Krugel.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of city council. Tonight is, is, for all intents and purposes, a continuation of the, the last meeting where some of the electric rates that are being proposed for 2022 were provided and presented on by, by Blair from DGR Group, or DRG, sorry, I get those mixed, or DGR, it's DGR. See, I get them mixed up. And tonight, we're looking for, Rich is here, the Public Services Director. He'll present on those, be able to answer any questions. But really what we're looking for tonight is just a, a motion to approve the rates for 2022. And then when we, we adopt the budget at the end of this year in December, there's a resolution that formally adopts the, the utility rates. These rates will be included. What this does tonight, if, if, if city council feels comfortable proceeding, is it allows us time to do an education campaign for the residents, the businesses, and everybody in town for, for what those changes are. We feel it's important because there are some pretty significant changes to just how we handle these and the different rate classes. So we, we ask that it's considered tonight, and, and we have Rich here to, to present. So I'll hand it off to Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Kachira, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so some of this is just a recap here. So overall, financial, we're, we're doing pretty good for two years, but going on from there is when we are going to fall short, and we, there'll be a slide coming up which will show what is coming of that. And that's where our unrestricted cash will fall short, and we need, that's one of the reasons we're doing this study and trying to plot out a course for the future so we don't have erratic rate jumps that are needed to stabilize the cash funds. So reclassification, few changes, you know, how, how we describe a customer, some of the bigger ones would be the new small industrial class. Another one would be the large rural. So those are a couple new ones. Another one is to move all intergovernmental customers, which obviously our city account, move them over to the correct rates that they are. And that would be, that is going to be the biggest adjustment with this whole policy. That's where the most rates will come into impact. And the other thing which is brought up at the last meeting, and a lot of this is due just because of the metering upgrade and our utility billing system upgrade. With those two components, we are able now to get this data to go forward with this. Again, recapping, trying to implement seasonality for rate classes. As you have seen, we pay more for our energy in the summer months, in the warm months than we do in, in the winter months. So trying to educate our customers on that. Time of use rates, that is something new and coming. It's already on the West Coast, it will be coming here, so we're going to start implementing that. And hopefully soon, we can be offering it to others to see if they want to look into. Also, this will help us better reflect our fixed costs, our fixed infrastructure, the power lines, the underground lines, the transformers, the poles, all the equipment that's needed to maintain that. This new rate structure will help us reflect that, that actual cost. And the new minimum demand, demand provision for rate classes at pay demand. That way, we are getting some revenue for the infrastructure that we have to put out there, even if they only use it one day a year. We have to install infrastructure that can handle that one day of year of load, and this will help us recover our costs better. Some of the capital improvements, ideally, we wanted to have this tonight. We just got the draft form and like Administrator Krugel said, we want to get this hopefully approved tonight. That way, we can get this out to the public so the public can learn what the new rates are, how this all works. So what will be coming forward is a equipment asset plan broken out into three phases. Phase one is obviously CASA 36 next year. We're also looking at Main Street substation transformers. We're also looking on, we need to do some improvements out in the country and also work on a south feeder loop. So that's phase one, you see $3.8 million that's estimated right now. Phase two, we have some old power line that needs to get converted over to the new all over town, Main Street feeder, bore right one work, that's, that's been about $3 million. Phase three, bore right two, then we'll need some work in the north feeder loop along with some more electric updating of old infrastructure. So these are, these have all been included in Blair's rate schedules and everything to go forward. Another, another item is we, we will eliminate the line of franchise fee and underground fee. We'll still collect the revenues, but that line item on the bill will be gone. And then we'll deactivate the ECA, we call it, the Energy Cost Adjustment. We'll deactivate that, but this allows us to reactivate it if the bills, if our bills from our power supplier justify that we are losing revenue. We can enact it. We track this monthly in our superintendent's report, which is a report that is built off the data from our metering system.
Could I add just something real quick about that? Because it's kind of relevant right now. There's been a couple of events this year that this has affected not us, but other regions of the country. MMPA has done a, a good job of using their reserve funds to kind of equalize what the, the costs are to their customers. But if in the future something happens that drastically, drastically affects us, this would allow us not to have to come up with those funds and then pass that along to the customer. We hope that doesn't happen, but at the end of the day, it, it, it could. But I think MMPA, our power provider, does a good job of mitigating that with, with the fund balance that they have that they can input into the system. But if it does happen, we do have a, a mechanism to reactivate and then collect that from our, from our customers. So it's just, it's there as kind of a insurance policy if that would ever happen, which we don't, which we hope it doesn't.
So again, the impacts residential, we have approximately six, 1,660 meters as a residential account at this point. Average residential user is 600 kilowatts, which would equal about $5.36 a month. General service, that usage is about 930 kilowatts per month. We have about 290 meters on that, on that rate class. Large general service, they have about 60 meters on that rate class. The new small industrial, we're, we're, with current usage, there'll be about seven customers on that. Large industrial will be about 11 customers. Small rural, which again, average use is about 900 kilowatts per month, about 200 users, and the large rural will have about nine meters. So, and with that, staff is recommending council approve the 2022 electric rate schedule as presented, and as Administrator Krugel presented, this would be included in the fall resolution when we adopt the budget. Any questions?
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Kachira at all? I want to thank you, Mr. Kachira. I know you've put a lot of work into this project as far as working a lot of this out along with the staff, and I know the budget and personnel worked with you a little bit on it, and we, you know, we've tried to wrap our minds around everything too, and we presented it to the council also. So it's, it's been a long, ongoing process, and, and I think it'll work to the advantage to all the customers once they, you know, have a good understanding of what's happening here. And there will be some type of public relations type program so people can understand what we're doing here a little better.
Yeah, definitely. There, there will be some outreach using every forum that we have to, to educate people about some of these changes, things that they can do to conserve energy, things of that nature. So some of the groups are quite large, like residential customers, so we'll, we'll use more of a mass media approach, and, and others are small, like our, our large industrial services will do more of a one-on-one with those. So we'll kind of make it fit for, for the size of the, the utility.
Very good. Anybody else have any questions?
How long will these rates be in effect? Just one year? And when will they be looked at again?
Yeah, I can answer that, that's a good question. So each year, we look at these annually. Generally, we do this in the fall after we adopt the preliminary general levy, and likely that'll be the, the continued sequence of events. This year's a little different. We, we kind of flopped it or flipped it with the, the preliminary levy just because we wanted to implement this education piece if it is adopted. So if, if it's formally adopted for 2022 in December, what we would do is we would just incorporate it into the normal budget process, and it'll be evaluated again likely in September, October of 2022.
Very good. Anybody else?
Let, let's be clear about that, Jasper and Rich. There may have to be an adjustment in the rates, but we've, we're not going to probably mess with these. That's not the right way to put it. We're not going to change the categories we've now come up with. That's the long-term view that we're taking. There might be some adjustments within them, but we're, we've devised a new system so that we're better providing service to all of our customers. Do I, is that a good encapslement of that?
That is correct. We, we are, we don't generally move these rate classes very often. The last time that we did this was quite some time ago, I would say 10-plus years. So we don't do it very often, but yes, we do adjust the rates, and we do have some projected rate adjustments that we have for the next, I think is, what is it?
Five years?
Ten years. Ten years. So to incorporate all of the C Ten years. So to incorporate all of the CIP items that we know about. Um, and then, uh, the assumed adjustments from our provided, our power provider. And our fund balance policy. Uh, we, those are all incorporated into these rates and, and have been, have been planned out.
Very good. Anybody else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two electric rate schedule as presented tonight. So move. Thank you, Mr. Krugel.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Thank you. Any other discussion, questions, comments?
Real quickly, Mr. Krugel didn't, Kroegman did.
Kroegman, thank you.
He can't do it. He tried, but he can't do it.
Well, well, we'll note that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kroegman. Any other discussion, comments? Not we'll, we'll be ahead with a, with a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you very much. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuchera. Moving on to regular agenda item six C, six C, twelve hundred Commerce Street, North Blight Reduction Project Agreement. Mr. Krugel.
Yeah, Mayor Kirby, members of City Council, uh, before you tonight is, uh, in agreement with the property owner. We have, uh, Engineer Bean Fang here tonight to answer any engineering questions. I'm kind of here to to answer any financial or, um, just kind of general community questions. Uh, but I think, um, we have a little presentation. We'll just start, we'll just get started and we'll have a discussion about the, the potential project. So, um, I'll hand it off to Cory. You can kind of get things kicked off and then I can interject if, if we need to.
So the, the property that we're talking about tonight is twelve hundred Commerce. So it's the, the, uh, the old grid giant, you know, pad or, or, or site where the demolition was done. The, the brick building was demolished. Think, you know, we, we, uh, called the demolition permit maybe first approved back in twenty fifteen, completed in twenty sixteen. So, um, that's just that we're talking about just to kind of set the table. Uh, that, that, uh, that site was, was recently used to salvage some aggregate material as part of our CASA twenty-two project. So it's directly adjacent to the improvements that were completed on Commerce Street. Um, and through that process and then even just, uh, you know, awareness of that prior to, um, there is acknowledgement that, that it's, it's pretty unsightly. You know, the, there's, there's rebar sticking up. There's um, noticeable sink holes now where the concrete's failed and there's, there's cavity void spaces underneath. Um, and so, so definitely a blight we're calling it. I'd say there's definitely some drainage concern. There's some, there's some just, um, you know, uh, safety concerns. And then ultimately just unsightliness as you're entering the community, looking at Commerce Street now, quite an upgrade. And so, um, it got proposed to potentially pursue an opportunity to utilize resources, construction contractor resources um, in the community directly adjacent to the site to proceed with the removal. Um, one of the pieces as well as the private property was the, the public right of way, the sidewalk. If folks are familiar, that sidewalk was in pretty poor shape. I think a lot of people probably recall that was through the demolition that, that really got uh, deterred and, and cracked. And so we did, we did reach out to the county and we actively ended up just correcting the, the public right of way. We got that sidewalk removed. That's gonna be grass restored. Um, county was a partner in that as part of the CASA twenty-two project. So the, the public, we, the public space that we have full control over, we felt like we made the right call and, and, you know, we, we are, um, proceeding with that improvement. The, the actual private property of the site itself, um, that would require a partnership with the property owner, right? We, we actually would be doing work on, on property that we don't have direct ownership or control of. And so, um, we have reached out and it's been kind of this three-part piece here and been a little bit the mediator in the middle, but, um, you know, working with the property owner, that it's obviously Mr. Churchill. Um, working with, with Jasper, the city and, and, and then ultimately getting concurrence that the contractor was interested, that they're even gonna be, you know, a partner in providing the resource. And really the, the proposal that, that's being brought forward or really what was trying to be strategized was an opportunity to move forward and remove the concrete that's on the site and ultimately get it to a grass state, get it to a turf restored state. Um, really no acknowledgement of, you know, what, what are the future redevelopment opportunities? I, I think there's been some rumblings that there are some, but really just trying to um, make better what is there and, and utilize the presence of the contractor. And so that's really the agreement brought forward. Um, the, the proposal that we've been, you know, kind of framework in the agreement under is it'd be a fifty fifty split. Um, so the, the property owner would be in it, in, in at a fifty percent as well as then the city. Um, and, and the agreement then would, would outline that. Uh, one of the things, you know, to, to kind of support the property owner side, and we've done this with, with the private service replacements, is there's an opportunity because of uh, the association with the project that we could, we could assess that. That, that, that would be accessible to the taxes at that rate of, of, of term, that fifteen-year term, as well as the interest that we've done the previous special assessments for, or those private service replacement assessments. So the agreement is not, um, unlike some of the other private work we've done in the project, just, just obviously a little different work scope. And then, um, to provide full clarity, I might be stealing a little bit of Jasper's thunder here, but, um, the, the idea to then from the standpoint of the city side is when we bonded this for this project, if we recall, there was a contingency built in with that. Um, and so I think that's the idea that, that there's tie to the project. And then as well as that tie, there'd be a financial tie. We would utilize some of that, that, um, finance contingency that, you know, five percent of the construction cost is what um, we've bonded for, for twenty-two. So we feel like the funds are available as well for this opportunity. Um, the idea with this is we would, we would pay for it a little bit in the structure of a time and material. There, there's just a lot of unknown with the site, you know, the depth of concrete and and we're projecting some of those footings and things to go down maybe five, six feet. And so the idea is a little difficult to bid, but the estimation is based on the hour, based on the hourly crew rate. Um, and we would, we would go there and we'd be able to track it that way. So it's not something that, you know, we feel like we can't keep our, keep our tabs on. Um, and then we'd have some disposal and then ultimately restoring. So feel like the estimate's pretty sound. It, it was prepared with a contractor partnership, kind of just to get a good estimate, I would say. Um, and so that's kind of setting what we hope would be the ceiling to accomplish the goal. We want to be able to get all the concrete out of there. We want to blackdirt it. We want to be able to seed it. And so that, you know, we're, we're, we're really in this framework of, um, forty-four to forty-five thousand. We think we'll, we'll get that. Now that's, that's each party, obviously. So that's, uh, what, what I guess what we're, what we're asking for council's consideration tonight. So the agreement's been through both, both sides, uh, legal staff. So it, it's been to Mr. Churchill's attorney as well as the city attorney. And, and we got the, the final version back from the city attorney. So we have, we have blessing of that. Um, the, the version in your packet is, is, is slightly revised by the final city attorney version. So it's pretty, pretty minor change, but, um, so both, both have, you know, been, you know, approved from a legal standpoint. Um, and then we did, we did, uh, get Mr. Churchill's signature on it. So at, at city hall here now, we do have, we do have um, at least a fully executed from the standpoint of the private. We felt Jasper and I felt that that was necessary before we bought that to council, just so that, um, you know, we, we had that concurrence and had that support from at least the, 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 one of the fifty percent parties. As far as timing goes, you know, the, the strategy, uh, at least what Henshaw would communicate. And so obviously they're a partner in this. They, they would like to, um, proceed sooner than later. And, and really the thought process regards the timing is they would like to do this work prior to doing the final ware lift. Um, so they would, they would actually do, do this removal work and I want to say abuse the street, but they would at, at least do that work first. Um, and then, you know, then we'd come back and, and, and wear then final commerce street. So I think there is some added value just, um, you know, with, with that consideration in mind. So I think, you know, things go fairly well tonight, we, we can have as much discussion as needed. I was, I think we would see this take shape pretty quickly. We've been working at this a little while to get everybody's in, in agreement. Um, I, I would say within probably within this month, we would see this for sure move forward. So.
If I may add a couple of things to just, uh, you know, these types of things we bring forward to city council because there, it's an opportunity, right? Uh, this is a, a site that I think everybody's familiar with. Um, it's a challenging site to deal with. Um, generally speaking, we've, we've had to send nuisance letters there in the past, and then it's basically brought up to the minimum standard uh, at that time. So it's something that we're as a city constantly kind of monitoring, looking at and working with the property owner to just kind of maintain that base level. Uh, so, you know, being that there's a project directly adjacent to it, we thought there's an opportunity here to, to evaluate what this could look like. And it is something that we get a fair number of complaints or I, I feel the fair number complaints about just, you know, we have this beautiful mural there and then we have this parking lot-esque demo pad that, you know, doesn't look good. So, um, they kind of don't, don't meld well together. Um, one question that I did field, uh, from, from a couple of council members was about, uh, the structure that's owned by Seneca across the road, almost directly across the road from there known as the P Palace. Um, we did reach out and we tried to get, uh, Henshaw to give us an estimate for that. They didn't want to touch it. Uh, you know, it, it, there's a lot of unknowns. There's a lot of concrete there. So that cost, it, we don't know what that would have cost. I think Cory and I both feel comfortable that it would likely be significantly more than what we're looking at right here. So just to kind of know that we are looking at it, not for this site, but other sites along the corridor. Um, and it is a product of what the, what the contractor is willing to even look at and give an estimate for. So, um, one thing or a couple of things to keep in mind, this is a partnership, public-private partnership. Um, this is something to help beautify the, the, the city a little bit as somebody, uh, comes in, like as Cory mentioned, uh, Commerce Street will look a lot different than it did last year at this time. Um, and this would, this would help kind of maybe with the image of, of lesure as people come in. Um, so that's something that we're looking at. It's not something that I think is, is, uh, how, how do I put this? It's not something that, that staff is pushing for. It's an opportunity that we should evaluate. So don't feel obligated as a city council to say, well, staff is bringing this forward. What we want to do is we're bringing opportunities. We want you to evaluate those. And if you think it's a good idea, we can, we can execute it pretty easily. If not, we can, we can continue to, to handle that property as we have in the past, but we're monitoring it for nuisances and things like that. So, um, that's kind of my, my, my input on this. Um, and we can entertain any questions. I'm sure there will be a few questions that Cory and I can kind of, kind of split up and answer accordingly.
And I just want to clarify the P Pal. So just, just so everyone's clear, that there, there was not receptiveness to this proposal of adding it to the project. So there, there's obviously some, some time commitment here that we have on twenty-two with ferry and start of school and just getting Elmwood back open. So we're, we've been afforded a two-year project and there's just always it feels like there's so much time, but we're, we're getting towards the end of July now. And so I think it was an acknowledgement that the project is more challenging than what Henshaw wanted to add. A, a, a site removal like this, they felt like this was controlled. It was, it's flat. Obviously the vertical element of the P Palace makes that a bit more complex. So just to be clear, that, that removal is completely feasible and I, I confident there's opportunities. I know Henshaw would be a bidder. Um, but it just in the framework of this proposal adding to, to Jasper's point, the opportunity now just wasn't as aligned as this. So just so we're all clear that there's opportunity to do something with that structure. It's just, it's more complex than, um, than a, than a flat site and some.
So, so the flat site is more time is of the essence type thing.
No, I wouldn't even say that. It's, it's, it's the opportunity is better here.
Because they're onsite now.
They're onsite now that they're recycling the concrete is for the aggregate base. Um, it, it's, it's more predictable here. It's just more controllable. Um, it's more similar, right? Removing a, a, a concrete foundation or concrete pad is very similar moving a street pavement. We've been doing that for two years. Um, removing a vertical structure that's got thirty-foot-high walls is just a different animal altogether. So this was sincere to the opportunity and alignment of Henshaw's and what, what the project of twenty-two is sort of encapsulated. So, um, that's why, that's why we're here talking about it is, is just, it's truly an opportunity thing. They're on, they're on that site for four months and, um.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of excited about the, the opportunity to, uh, kind of change the, uh, complexion of the community as you come in to town. I, I think it's, um, the timing is good with it. And I, I would hope that maybe down the road it may, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Krugel, would it maybe, um, help in the future with maybe some new opportunities with Commerce?
And I, I would say it wouldn't hurt, right? Um, that's kind of an unsightly property right now. Um, and one thing I will mention is that in the past, in past budgets, we've, we've had money in, in there allocated for condemnation and things like that. Um, we, we've since moved that out this year, we've moved that into just our basic contingency fund. But if that's something, a program that that you'd like to look at, we could look at that for the, the twenty twenty-two budget, um, kind of having a program like this. Uh, we don't have one right now, but, but something that can help address blight. Um, things of that nature where we can partner, you know, we've, I've had, I've had numerous conversations with Seneca, uh, management about the P Palace and really it's something that they, it, it, they know it's going to be expensive to remove. Um, there's no real, you know, uh, turnkey development that would happen when it's removed, but at the end of the day, it would help. Um, and this would help too, to help get some development potentially in, in that area on Commerce. So, hopefully that helps.
Good. I, I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity and I, I'd like to know what everybody else thinks.
I've got a couple of questions on the scope of the project. There's a approximately a four-foot retaining wall in the back of that, that I don't know if the slab is incorporated into that retaining wall. Would we be removing that also?
We would not. So the, the, the proposal is we would remove out. So on the east side, we would remove up to the right of way. So that, that full, you know, a border, a budding commerce would be removed. There's a proposal to saw cut along that west retaining wall. Um, that's a little bit more complex. There's actually some retaining that that wall is serving for the site. The, the fence is obviously on that. And I think, um, you know, opportunity to work with that wall would probably require railroad coordination. Um, just for the standpoint, that's the adjacent boundary of what is then the, the UP track. So we are not planning to touch the retaining wall. It'd be everything interior of that up then to Commerce Street.
Then my other question was in that intersection that we can see on the screen now. When they had that torn up, they found additional infrastructure in the street that the city wasn't aware of. That Green Giant had put in. Is there any other infrastructure we need to be concerned about that might be underneath that slab? That.
It, it, you know, it, it, it is. It, it is a, a loaded question. I would say, um, there, there's nothing that we actively know about other than, than the, the, to understand that there's concrete foundations and likely some voids, some footings. We don't believe, um, that there's anything else, but that will be, that will be obviously be to, to, to be determined. The records are really poor. That's part of the reason why the city struggled to understand what we all knew about Pec Street. So undoubtedly the records from the Green Giant facilities and infrastructure is poor. Um, and a lot of it is, you, you don't fully know until you open it up. But, um, we, we, the intent and the scope of this project through a conversation with Mr. Churchill and, and city staff and recollection of Green Giant is that this is, this is meant to be a concrete removal and fill project.
Mr. Mayor, I have a number of questions. And comment. The estimate here is roughly eighty-eight thousand. The city pays half of that. We do it into bond. What's the bond interest right now? What are we gonna, if we, if we borrow forty-four thousand, what is it really going to cost us? That's the first question.
Uh, yeah, I can, our, our bond rate for this bond that, uh, the twenty twenty B issuance was, I believe, one point six eight percent.
Uh, I won't ask you to calculate it. It's a fifteen-year payment though.
That is correct.
Okay. Now, that's a nice estimate at eighty-eight plus. Are we really sure of that or how high can it go? My recollection is there's a limit for the property owner. Are we talking, it might go a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty? Do we know? Or we have a guarantee? Does Henshaw give us a guarantee of what the price might be? Are we just opening this up to whatever it costs? Does that make sense?
It, it, yes. And I, I can address that. And in the agreement, um, I believe there's a, there's a cap of fifty thousand dollars.
For the owner.
For the owner. And we, we would not exceed that as a, as a city. So we would hit that number. Um, that would be the authorized amount that we would, you know, up to a hundred thousand. Um, right now the estimate's eighty-eight. Uh, so we wouldn't exceed a hundred. That, that's where we would stop. Um, but they would, we would, we would make sure the project's managed in a manner that we would at least be able to get it to the point where we, where it's acceptable aesthetically. Um, some of those concrete slugs that might be twelve feet deep might only be, uh, removed to thirty inches. Uh, they'll, they'd be marked, uh, so that future developers would know where those are. So aesthetically it would be, I, I, I'm confident we could, we can complete it for eighty-eight thousand or up to a hundred thousand. Uh, but to get every single piece of concrete out might be a challenge until we know what's actually there.
Let's continue with blighted property in town. Not just this one, any blighted property. Do we have the ability to take legal action and have that property corrected by the property owner?
Yes, we can. So that blighted property would fall under our nuisance code and we could, we could pursue that, correct?
I've had a conversation by email with you today, Jasper. And you pointed out however, that with this one, there's an issue because the building next to it is owned by the same owner as this blighted area. Is that correct?
Yeah. So I, I believe if I, if I may, the, the conversation was more about condemnation, um, which is a different process than our nuisance. So nuisances, we can send a letter. Uh, we generally give about seven, seven days to correct that nuisance. If that's not corrected, then what we can do is then we correct it ourselves and then. If that's not corrected, then what we can do is then we correct it ourselves and then, and then build that back. Um, in this case, um, the nuisances, uh, are the weeds, um, the rubble piles, things of that nature. Not the actual concrete that you can see, um, that would be considered, uh, uh, nuisance. But, um, you know, as far as the blight goes, you do have some structures that you do see. Um, you know, you could, you could maybe, uh, I'm just thinking this through on the fly. You could maybe, uh, send a letter about rubble piles and things of that nature and, and have them correct that. And those have, there have been some corrections over since I've been here over the last four years or so. So there have been some corrections. But, um, nothing like what you would see with this, with this type of project.
Now let's just carry it one step further. If there's a house in town that's, that's blighted and we want to condemn it. We can go through legal process with the entire property and have it, have the blight, have the, whatever the property, the structure removed. At the owner's cost. Is that correct? If we, if we're successful with the court.
It, it would be, blight would be a challenging thing to, to condemn on. Um, it would have to be a process where the blight would exceed. The, 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 the value of the home. Um, generally speaking, condemnation happens because there's some structural issues with the building where it's unsafe to the public. So, or the occupants of the, of the building. Um, blight generally is, is, is you try to abate blight by, by removing it. Um, not taking the, the, the structure, taking the property from the, from the owner.
Okay, I'm going to state two concerns and then I'll be quiet for a while. I will guarantee you, stay quiet. Seems to me that when an owner obtains property, they assume the responsibility for it. And it's troubling to me that someone will get this property and all of a sudden, not all of a sudden, but eventually the city is now buying in to helping. Clean up a property that a property owner bought, knowing what it was, even if there was a building there before. That property owner should be responsible for whatever happens on that property, not the city. So as much as I agree, Mr. Mayor, this would look great. Be nice to have a little thing that looked like a park down there. I don't think it's our responsibility to make it be that way. In fact, what I would suggest would be that the owner give half of it to the city. And we'll take half of it and make it into a little park. And the other half, he can spend his forty-four thousand plus to improve. It's just a, a crazy thought, but I don't see where it's our responsibility to do this. Now, if we go forward with it and it's done, people will say wonderful. If it's not, they'll look to me or some others. Vote not to do it perhaps, if I vote that way and say, gee, it's your fault. It looks so crony. It's not our fault. It's the owner's fault. Okay. And I think we have to keep that, that perspective. It, this is really troubling to me to, to think of what we're doing here. Because if there's other property like this, other places, are we going to be, every time this comes up, we're, now it's our turn to chip in. To do what should have been done by someone else. Okay, that, I'll, I'll stop there, I think, for now. Thank you.
So are you, are you considered about, or you're concerned about precedents is what you're?
Yes, I didn't use that word, but that's exactly what I'm concerned about.
If I can make a comment that ties into that, when I first was reading over the proposal, my initial thought went to the E D A. If this is a business facade improvement project, that they should be going to the E D A for maybe a loan or grant support. To update the facade of their site. Um, and so I have concerns with moving forward with that as well. Even it would look great, but.
Anybody else?
Mr. Krugel, if you would, again, I had information from you. I asked, why isn't E D A involved? You might want to answer that question at least at this point in time.
Yes, uh, if I may. Uh, so the E D A, uh, has recently, um. Say expended a lot of funds related to the, to the mall project. In that sense, uh, that this would be proposed in this manner where it would be a kind of a grant contribution. Um, I think the E D A would have a challenging time doing that. Now, if it was a revolving loan fund loan. Um, they would likely be able to issue something of that nature. So, um, again, it would be, you know, let's say it's the, the full amount for the property owner, hundred thousand dollars or eighty-eight thousand dollars. At the E D A's revolving loan fund rate of three percent. Um, that could be proposed if the property owner want to do something like that. It wouldn't be, I, I wouldn't, I, the facade is kind of capped at five thousand. Or up to some amount that the, the E D A determines. I think this would fall more into the, um, realm of a revolving loan fund loan. Potentially to do something like that. Um, if, if that's the direction that city council wants to go, um, that can be, you know. Basically we can alert the property owner that that's an option and, and see if they would like to pursue that.
Anybody else? Well, at this time, uh, nobody has any other questions. I'll take any motions at this time. If not, I will, I will, um, make a motion that we, we go through with this, with the twelve-hundred Commerce Foundation, uh, removal. And, uh, I, I'm going to make that motion that we go ahead and do this. Anybody want to second that? No seconds? Any other motions? No other motions? So with that, then I think we just, um. Pass on the opportunity.
That is correct. So just the procedure item, it's, it, there's no motions to approve or deny. Um, so this just kind of dies here. So.
Okay, very good. Thank you Cory. We appreciate your help tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, that will move on to. Comments, reports, items of appreciation. Council members, this is your opportunity to share any commission reports, committee reports. Or any activities in the community you wish to report about. So at this time, we'll start with, uh, council member Krogman.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing. Very good. Council member Lozey? Nothing. Council member Mahoney?
I don't have anything either. We did have a planning commission meeting, um, this month. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend. So Jasper is going to give my updates.
Yes, and i- if I may, now, I'll, I'll just provide that, uh, planning commission update. Uh, it was my first planning commission meeting where I was kind of acting as the staff liaison. So I thought it went well. It was good discussion. We hadn't had a planning commission meeting for what, two months? Um, so everybody was kind of chomping at the bit. Um, there, there were two action or motions, I'll say, two motions at the meeting. Um, one is related to the future of the city forum and there's a survey that's going to be going out in August. Um, to kind of get a base, some baseline information about the, uh, community perception of what, what the city's doing. Um, so look to see that marketed, um, from basically August first through, I believe, September fourth. Um, so that'll be happening. And then, um, the second motion, uh, was related to the comprehensive plan action team. And, uh, the planning commission took action to recommend that that's dissolved, uh, by city council. Um, and that'll be brought forward at the next city council meeting, um, with the idea that the planning commission will serve as that role. So, so serve basically the role of CPAT. Um, uh, we did have a good conversation about how the planning commission can create their own groups. If they, if they feel that there's a need for a subcommittee of some sort, uh, city code allows them to say, yep, we want to create a subcommittee on this aspect. So they do have the ability if they, if they feel they have the need to, um, to create something that maybe is more specific to a specific task. Um, I would say, uh, from my general observations of the planning commission, they are, uh, they, they're looking for things to do. So I think they're going to take this on and, 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 and really run with it and, and do a good job. So, um, that's the planning commission update.
Thank you. Appreciate that update, Mr. Krugel. Uh, on to, uh, council member Schlier.
I have nothing on my regular items. I just wanted to mention I did attend the planning commission meeting. I appreciated Jasper explaining the policies and procedures that are available to them. So they felt comfortable in making their decision on CPAT. Otherwise I have nothing else.
Thank you. Council member Sullivan.
Um, all I've got to report on tonight is we did have a fire commission meeting, um, last week. And I would like to commend Joe, our new finance director for the work he put into auditing the last three, four years worth of. Fire runs and correcting some overbilling to the townships and underbilling to some of the townships and the city. To correct some errors that were made over the years. Um, it did find that we owe the fire department an additional eighteen thousand out of our budget. But, um, it was good to get it corrected to have the right areas paying for what they're using. Um, we did get a tour of the new fire truck. It's pretty nice. It sounds like, um, with some extra work from Jesse and his team. As our chief, um, they did sell the other two trucks and make more money than we anticipated on them. So that was a positive.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, and thank you for your work with that commission and, and your relationship with the fire department. Thank you. Uh, council member Swanberg is absent tonight. Uh, I have nothing to report other than, uh, Thursday, Mr. Sullivan and myself, Mr. Krugel will be at the, uh. Uh, community center task force kickoff, which is at four o'clock, correct?
That's correct.
And that's all I have to report. So with that, we'll let you end with anything you have.
Yeah, um, I was going to touch base on the community center task force. That's been something that's been in the mix for a while here. But I'm, I'm happy that we're, we're kicking it off and I think it will, will, will have some good things happening. Um, I can confirm the, the school superintendent, Jim Wagner, him and I have, have met and he will be, I believe, in attendance at that meeting. Um, if you've been following the referendum question, uh, there's a survey that went out. Um, there's a discussion about a possible field house, which kind of opens the doors to maybe some partnerships with the, the city. Um, and I'm really, uh, excited for, for him to, to provide some input on that, um, as we kind of look at our community center. So whenever we can share, uh, resources, uh, we ultimately save the community money. Um, so that's happening at four o'clock. Uh, there's another big countywide event happening at, I believe, one o'clock or noon, noonish. Um, it's the Lesur envisioning, uh, um, exercise that they're having at the, the Lesur County Fairgrounds in Le Center. Um, and really what that is, is, is the county hosting an event where people can discuss what they envision Lesur being. And I think this is kind of a, um, preemptive exercise. Um, the, the county is looking to, to adopt their first comprehensive plan. Um, likely in the next few years. So kind of getting that ball rolling, getting some ideas. And potentially, uh, being able to meet the new county administrator, um, Joe Martin as well. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm planning on attending. I'm not sure, uh, uh, city council's invited. Um, you know, it, it, it should be a good event. I'm, I'm curious to see what all comes of it. So.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. At this time, we'll take a vote to close the meeting. All those in favor? Aye, everybody opposed? Thank you, everybody.